Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, in whose liberty we shall govern.
Approval minutes? Motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? No discussion?
Mr. Ascolon?
Yes.
Mr. Carolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kellen?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Communications? Communications on files at the board office? Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. So, we're going to open up with our statewide assessment report this evening, but I think it's important to couch the presentation away. So, you know, I have ownership as the superintendent of the district that, you know, we have questioned the Park Assessment in many different guises over the past several years. There is a lot that's yet unknown in terms of the new administration. We certainly were in the context of a gubernatorial campaign, and there are questions that abound about the future. What there is no question about, as we stand presently, though, is that many of our current students are operating within this system in a very high-stakes environment, and they have to pass these exams to graduate at this point in time. It is certainly requiring us to take a real deep dive into what some of those areas that we need to grow as a district look like, what some of those areas of strength are, and how we move forward with Park. As a parent of four, you know, I've continually asked for a couple things from the state. You know, I've requested over and over again device-specific data. Do students that take it on a desktop perform any different than students that take it on an iPad versus a Chromebook? And I think that that's a legitimate request from folks in the field, so that we understand that we are, with whatever device we're using for our students to test, putting them on the best possible playing field to perform well. That's been one of the asks, and I think that, you know, there are certainly some concerns whenever there comes down to a very specific cut score, and either meeting that score or not meeting that score, and as it relates to graduation requirements. And for instance, when we were looking at the class of 2020, which doesn't, there are no high stakes for presently, but if there were, you know, under the current cutoff, we would have somewhere around 112 students within a couple points of either missing that cutoff or not. And when you're talking about, you know, a test that has a little bit of a range, that's a problematic place to be. And we cannot ignore the assessment. That, you know, that is for certain, because we have an obligation to the students to make sure that they are fully prepared to do well.
Mr. Sanderson, I hate to interrupt, but I missed something. When you just went back and looked at the class of 2020, how many students was it?
There were about 112 that were within a couple points of what that cut score would have been, south of that point, by a couple points.
So, is that for all six schools?
Correct. That's correct.
But then, were there more than 100 that had the worst score and weren't close?
Well, there are others that had scores that were significantly lower. The point I was making is that we were within a couple points on a test that has a range in points, a plus minus, and that makes it a little convoluted when you roll over the high-stakes nature to it, and just making sure that we do everything we can to move that line north rather than south. So... Sorry to interrupt. No, that's okay. That's a good question. But I'm going to turn it over to, we have Dr. Hazel, Dr. Taylor, and Ms. Howell, and they'll take it from here.
Good evening. As Mr. Sanderson stated, annually, we report out our statewide assessment. So, what we're reporting now on this thing is the Park Assessment for 2017, and also DLM for our students with IEDs, that's Dynamic Learning Maps. So, we're going to proceed with the data to the Board of Education and to the public this evening on both of those assessments. Now, as you know, Park is students in grade three and goes toward grade 11. Here for Freehold Regional High School purposes, we'll be reporting this evening on English Language Arts Literacy, grade nine, 10, and 11, and in Mathematics, Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. When we report that data this evening, Ms. Howell is also going to step through the graduation requirements. For each class, it's just a little bit different in nuance. For class of 2021, which are our freshmen, they are required to pass, take and pass, Park Algebra One, and also English Language Arts Literacy, grade 10. So, you'll see our scores are going to be compared to this state as well as other Park states. So, you'll see that represented this evening. I'm going to go through the grade levels, if you don't have to. On the next slide, as Mr. Sanderson said...
Can I ask a question? Okay. With respect to math, so it only goes up to the Algebra Two, so if you're a junior and you took Algebra Two when you were sophomore, that means you don't take the math part when you're a junior?
That's correct.
Okay. Sorry.
So, it ends of course. So, if you're enrolled in Algebra One class, you're taking the Algebra One part. If you're enrolled in the Geometry, you're taking the Geometry part. Enrolled in Algebra Two class, the Algebra Two part. So, you're going to see the scores ranging from level one to level five. For level four and five, that's meaning grade level expectations by exceeding grade level expectations. For some of these assessments, you'll see highlighted in green, some of them, if you earn a level three, or is approaching grade level expectations, that is an appropriate, sort of, passing score for students for the DOA. So, we'll go through each of those. But again, you're going to see our data. We'll start with Park, English Language Arts Literacy. Then, we're going to weave into the Park map, and then Dr. Taylor is going to end with our DLM results of the next round. Okay? Thank you. Okay. So, I'm moving into this chart for a couple of minutes. As Dr. Hazel said, we'll be presenting our 2017 scores for ELA and for Mathematics. And these are our scores for ELA. So, you can see first listed are the valid test scores. That's that first column. And it's divided by the Park states, New Jersey, and the Freehold Regional High School District. One thing that you're probably noticing is that as we go down in grades, the number of valid test scores is decreasing, and that certainly has a lot to do with the graduation requirements and those students that were required to take the assessment as a graduation assessment requirement. So, for example, I'll speak briefly about the requirements for the classes of 2020 and 2021, where we'll find that more students are sitting for that exam, because they are required to sit for it and pass it, or have option of a portfolio in order to graduate. You'll note that for the ninth-grade class of 2020, 61.3% of students met or exceeded expectations, which is scoring a four or better, and the majority of the ninth-grade cohort sat for that assessment. For the 10th-grade test, 39.3% of students met or exceeded expectations. And in 10th grade, we had 1,773 valid scores, which was only about 66% of students that are enrolled in 10th grade English. So, again, for 10th and 11th graders, they have alternative assessments that are available to them, things like the SAT, the ACT, as that, that they can pass. They can meet that benchmark score that would then determine that they were eligible for their high school diploma. For the 11th-grade test, 49.9% of students achieved a passing score, which was a score of three or better. And in 11th grade, you'll notice that there are 1,122 valid scores, which again is lower. It's about 40% of 11th-grade students. One important reason for the lower number of valid scores in 11th grade is that students that take either a TBAPE, English Language, or Literature exam, or the IB exam are in standard for having to take the Park test. So, fewer students are going to be taking that exam. So, those are our English ELA results. And we'll look briefly at Mathematics. Thank you. So, this chart shows the district-level outcome of third year of Park Assessment in Mathematics. And this is a little bit different. As Mr. Messinger said, it is not by grade level, but by the course that they are enrolled in. You'll note that close to 30% of students met or exceeded expectations in Algebra One, and there is 1,622 valid scores for Algebra One. Now, note that students that take Algebra One in the seventh or eighth grade, which are certainly many of our students from our sending schools, are not counted in these test scores. It counts for the school that they were at while they took that course. 72% of students achieved a passing score in Geometry, which was a score of three or better. There were 2,077 valid test scores, which is actually close to the 2,500 students enrolled in Geometry. And 51% of students achieved a passing score in Algebra Two, which was a score of three or better, and there were 1,303 valid test scores. Again, students in the class of 2018, 19, which at this time were most of our students enrolled in Algebra Two, were not required to either sit or pass this Park Assessment. So, what do we do in looking at this data? Certainly, it's just one measure that we use when we're making either curricular, programmatic decisions. We analyze it on a district, school, and student level. And I think what is especially important is that we are now in the third year of the Park Assessment and feel really better prepared to make these important decisions and to do the deep-dive analysis that is necessary when you're looking at changes potentially for close to 10,000 students. So, one of the things that has been very important, all of our curriculum are now aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, which is a course aligned to the Park Assessment. So, there is ongoing work throughout the course of this year focused on ensuring that, of course, our curriculum and our instruction are aligned to those standards, so we can prepare our students in the context of instruction for this assessment. Because the district has always believed that the way to increase achievement is to focus on engaging and relevant curriculum and instruction. One other factor that has become increasingly important is the students' comfort level through this round of assessment. These are computer-based assessments, which certainly for us is a shift, as students continue to go through this process of developing the comfort level. But that is something that we are preparing them for, and that has been an adjustment now that we are in year three. Another thing that we are really working on has just informed our understanding is being focused on the types of supports that our educators need as we're preparing students for these assessments. And there's a lot of support that our students might need, whether they're interventions to the individual student, or supports that pertain to the really instructional practice for all students. And finally, our program planning. As we reflect on the data, and we identify the different needs of our students and our staff, we're going to plan the entire issue of our program. And if we need to make changes to any of the articulation, starting in Algebra One, we're going to go through geometry, and then ultimately Algebra Two. I think, however, what's very important to remember is that these are just one measure of our student's success, and we always remember that. And that when we're considering our goal, which is certainly growth and achievement on external standardized tests as well, that we focus especially on raising student achievement, but also raising our students' potential. And that is the guiding philosophy that has been important to us in our preparation. I wanted to make mention the change in the graduation requirements for students particularly for the classes of 2020 and 2021. So, our former students that had to sit for Park, whether it was the classes of 2015, 16, and then dispatched their 2017, had alternative pathways, if you will, that were available to them to earn their diploma. They could achieve certain benchmark scores on the alternative assessments. The class of 2020, you mean, those alternatives will only be available to them if they do sit for Park. So, as long as they sit, if they don't achieve their passing score on Park, these alternatives will be available. And they are still the same, the SAT, the ACT, things like the ASVAB. So, it is, and we have seen, of course, an increase in students that are sitting, and they understand the importance of it, and that these alternatives will be available if they do. And then, for our class of 2021, which are our current ninth-graders, this is also a shift, because those alternatives are no longer available. So, they are required to sit for the Park Assessment, ultimately pass the Park Assessment in order to earn a high school diploma. However, the final pathway that is still available is the portfolio, and that has always been an option for our students. And we, of course, have made some place to make sure that students are successful on the Park, and if they are not, definitely get them ready for that portfolio process.
Mrs. Howell, a question for you. If a student is a three, is that, that's passing?
Well, for the classes of 2018 and 2019, depending upon which they're sitting for, it depends if it's ELA 11, that is three currently was passing, and for Geometry and Algebra Two, they have not yet set those scores, as you can see, for 2020 and 21. We are anticipating that that will move to a four. That is what has been suggested, and you can see that with Algebra One.
A student who has a three, though, do we try to do any improvement to get them to be a four?
Absolutely. Yes. I think, and when we look at it, in the school level, it's always about where can we take that student, whether they're at a one, maybe getting them to a two, or two to a three, always looking at their performance. Absolutely.
Hello. I've got the report for the results of the Dynamic Learning Maps from 2017 to 2021. In 2015, the Alternative Assessment, also called the PA, is a place I'd be allowed to do Dynamic Learning Maps assessment, if I so could theorize. It's been less than a challenge to improve special education. It's not something that all special education is supposed to allow for special education to be experienced in that type of place. Of record at the University of other states, which is being considered, and it's based on the essential elements, which is the relied elements of the state coming forward to do this again. It's based on four levels. Level one is emerging. Level two is approaching the target. Level three is a target. Level four is advanced, in contrast to the purpose of this market. So, this study does not need to be strong. And library won't much help in the park, so that's fine. Much more basic. And we fare quite well compared to the state. In English Language Arts Literacy, we still get 2% of expectations for the community, for the act, and we're 32% from the state. And in terms of Mathematics, we toy with 25%. Neither the state number four two is standard as compared to the office that we're doing, which I quite well and have shown in the last one. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. So, a few additional points and some things that should be noted. So, we were at a, I attended a meeting with the, to the Deputy Commissioner and the Assistant Commissioner last week, because CUSAC, the tool through which school districts are formally evaluated, a significant portion of those points are devoted to how well you perform on Park now. So, they've shifted the new CUSAC to be much more heavily focused on standardized testing performance. One of my, one of my concerns that we raised, and a group of us as regional high school district superintendents actually raised, is that when you take the ninth-grade Algebra One assessment for regional high school districts, is the only Park assessment that every single student that takes that assessment is either at or below grade level in terms of mathematics, because other students have moved on to Geometry in ninth grade, or Algebra Two or more advanced. So, it automatically puts a regional high school district at a disadvantage, so to speak, in terms of what those scores might look like, because the correlation between mathematics proficiency and performance on that Algebra One assessment is strong. And it gives a false sense of how well a district might perform in CUSAC, when a K-8 regional district has absolutely all of the advanced students who have already matriculated beyond Algebra One, taking that assessment and scoring, and they're scored under the same CUSAC formula as we are. So, the point of the meeting was that was one of several issues that seemed to disproportionately impact regional high school districts in terms of how we were being evaluated under the new model designed by the state. So, that was a concern that we raised to those folks, and I hope that, I hope that they listen to us. The other concern that I have raised over time is that 70% of how a student performs on a standardized assessment, somewhere around 70%, right, and I'm channeling my inner Chris Tinkin here, can be explained by the student's wealth and the level of education of the parents. So, schools are in that mix for some, the 30% and thereabouts, whatever else might factor into how well that student performs, but somewhere around 70% of it is determined by that. My fear in the state of New Jersey is that the Park Assessment can have a disproportionate impact, particularly on our poor students. So, I don't think, and I've advocated for this, I don't think that it's fair that a poor student who might not perform as well on standardized assessment for a host of factors, or an English language learner, would have to sit for six assessments in their high school career versus a wealthy student who is, has a strongly, a stronger statistical chance of just scoring well from the get-go. So, they take one and move out of it. So, I think that there are some real equity issues here that the state, I hope, will address. We've raised those concerns again and again, and I think that we need to take a look at that, because in addition to the Park Assessment, there's a new science assessment that's coming down the pipe now, and it's an 11th-grade assessment, and where all of our students used to take the federal NJBCT, the Biology Exam, which was frankly just an inordinate amount of work for very little return. Now, what you have is the new science assessment. There's a very good chance that if a student has, it's cumulative, if a student has not taken physics, there are chunks of that exam that will be related to physics. So, again, and draw the demographic lines, draw the poverty lines. I think it may, there might be some real equity issues there for how these assessments play out for the kids within our system. We continue to raise those concerns. We continue to ask those questions, and there is some lack of clarity about what this might look like long-term, as Ms. Howell noted, like the cut scores were not even determined at this point. What we need to make sure we do as a school system is be positioned to help our students do as well as they possibly can, so it's one less barrier to them achieving their potential. Thank you, folks. I'm still going. So, just a number of notes here for the upcoming week in particular. Tomorrow, a really cool event with the Freehold Borough K-8, and the Howe K-8, and the Freehold Regional High School District, over yesterday and today, and really, Dr. Tomazik, the Freehold Borough Superintendent, is the driving force behind this. But we are hosting, God bless you, we are hosting a delegation from New Taipei City, who are touring all three of our different districts and spending some time within our districts. And I'm presenting to them in the morning at Freehold Borough about the work that's been done in our International Baccalaureate Program. And it's an awesome opportunity to have some exchange of ideas about how we do things and how they do things. New Taipei City is a huge district, and they have a number of growing magnet programs, and very interesting programs. So, looking forward to that. Tomorrow night is our annual band festival at Howe High School. It's the only time of the year where all six of our marching bands come together, and I wouldn't say they compete, but they collaborate, and it's an awesome night for every band member to see the other bands in action. It's something that we take great pride when we have those district-wide events with our six sister schools. So, that's tomorrow evening in Howe High School at 6:00. The Spooktacular was moved from last week to this week, this Wednesday. Spooktacular involves all six high schools and the Freehold Borough community, where our students in our art programs go, you know, downtown Freehold and paint the windows. But it's not just a day of going out and painting. These students have to design that visual from start to finish. They have to be selected in their art class. Then, they spend the day. They have one day to get it up on the window, and I just think it's a wonderful community event. So many folks from the community, the business owners, that allow us to participate, the folks on the Spooktacular Committee, who are fantastic every year. Federici's donates all the pizza for the kids to eat over the course of the day, and it's just an awesome, it's an awesome representation of what our students can do, and other community members pop by and just start talking to our students while they're engaged in the work. So, that's this Wednesday. On Thursday, Dr. Sharp and I have the privilege of presenting at the, what is it, the Empower 18, the NJPSA ASCD, New Jersey ASCD Conference. I'm making Dr. Sharp nervous, because I refuse to look at our notes, you know, ahead of time. But the, it's a terrific presentation done off of the work we did with an aspiring administrator academy here in the district, and some of the returns that we've had from that program over the past several years. And, you know, Dr. Sharp had written an article about that that was published ultimately, and so it's a nice capstone of a real-time program that we have here that we get to, we get to share with others. And then, looking forward at the New Jersey School Boards Conference, I have the opportunity to present about our district work related to equity goals, and through the Panasonic Foundation, my work with the New Jersey Network of Superintendents, and also to participate in the legislative session through the Garden State Coalition of Schools, where we have Senator Sweeney, Assemblyman Greenwald, and a few others locked in to come present and spend some time with us. So, looking forward to that. That concludes my report. Mr. Brown?
Next report, board reports. Mike is going to do Finance.
Thank you very much. We had on October 11th a Finance Committee meeting, where we looked at the year ahead, and we basically focused on three different big-picture items. The first one was with respect to unit lunch. Obviously, we have block scheduling occurring next year, and as everyone knows, there's only going to be one lunch period. I think, actually, the faculty was meeting today to get talking points about this. But essentially, to deal with the increased numbers taking lunch at the same time, we're going to have lunch being served, three different locations in the school, obviously, the cafeteria, then the main gym, and then one other location, like a mini-gym or the library. So, the custodians have to be redeployed in order to put all the equipment away in a timely manner. And with this change, the students are going to see their lunch period go from 28 minutes to 35 minutes. We're at some point going to have to award a bid for purchasing the serving equipment. We'll probably end up doing that in the first quarter of next year. And if you have a student in the district, they got a notification today that the evening of parent-teacher conferences, there's going to be a session to inform the parents of what's going to transpire next year with respect to block scheduling. The second issue we talked about was the referendum. The administration's been researching major areas of need, and the way it looks right now, next year at some point, we are going to go to the voters with the referendum. I have no idea at this point what is going to be on there, the dollar amount, but we talked about big talked about big picture issues in terms of having it divided up between money for instructional spaces, money for athletic facilities, and also money for infrastructure. And as a matter of fact, if you look at I-5 on the agenda tonight, you can see we're actually approving the architect for pre-referendum services. And with respect to this referendum, you'll probably see a public presentation in January, and then the board would probably go to vote on this in March. And then the third issue we talked about was with respect to the budget, and we just went over the calendar of events, so we know that the auditor comes in in December, tentative budget is voted on in March, and then obviously we have the public hearing and the vote in April of 2018. And that is it, Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. I'm getting tapped on the shoulder here.
And just a dovetail on the block schedule that Mr. Messinger brought up, you know, most districts that have adopted the block, you know, do it from year to year, so you end the year on June 30th, thereabouts, and you start the year on September 1st with the new schedule, and I think it's important to note that while we have our parent evening that we're ramping up, we absolutely have spent three years planning for this, three years looking at every nook and cranny, developing our professional development around student-centered instruction, helping our faculty and staff prepare for that transition so you don't just simply open a new schedule and expect everything to move as it was. We did that in collaboration with our negotiations with the Teachers Association, and they've been a terrific partner in developing that work. Dr. Hazel, Sean Boyce, Shayna Howe, they've done tons of backwork on really making that work. Liz Higley's here, she was on the committee as well, and a lot of administrators that are in the room have served in one capacity or another. It's been an awful lot of work. We know that there will be kinks, but I think that we are poised to be very successful, but the most important component to all of that, to me, is making sure that we help folks utilize their instruction in the best possible way to maximize that time with students, and I think that's really been the emphasis of where we focused our time. And you know, the letter that we sent home, we're also going to go through, on October 25th and 27th, we're running a mock schedule with our students so that teachers can literally have a dry run of that new schedule, and so that students can experience it as well before next year. So it's something that we're looking forward to.
Public participation? Jamie? Jamie's not here? Okay, so we're going to go to Rebecca.
No. No policy of quitting?
No.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Kernek. I'm a Freehold High School graduate. I came all the way from Delaware to come here with Dr. Brett Holman. I have to walk from work today, because I will tomorrow to make sure that I can be here to speak for him. As a student, I P, he kind of took me through my four years of school, where school was a struggle, and didn't really necessarily want to go to school, or talk in smaller classes, or media classes. Today, I'm a bad time, I never thought I'd make it this far to where I am, and I think it's a shame, the allegations that are against him right now. I do want to say, I don't think it's fair to the students who are in high school now to not let them there, who definitely have blessings to have, and helps myself and several other students make it through. And other than that, I don't know if that's not the next person who wants to speak, but I definitely don't want to show you a kind of whiskey, not moving now.
Thank you. Josh?
I just want to make sure I'm in frame, because I know there's an issue that happened with this Randy Rankin. I've been watching the videos online, it's an angle to attend because of my four schedules that I'm here now. So just want to make sure I'm in frame. Am I good? Am I good? Thank you. Okay, so good evening, everyone. My name is Sasha Oxman, as I said before, I'm here to speak on behalf of Dr. Brett Holman. I'm a graduate of Freehold High School, graduated in 2013, and I just graduated from Oxford State University in May with a Bachelor's of Arts in Communication Studies, Public Relations Marketing, from minor's business, and I graduated co-ed, and I'm super proud to be a Red Law, but I'm not proud to be a Memorial at all. Farrow is not a big family, as many people like to say it is, especially Ms. Linda Jewell who likes to bring that colloquialism out a lot. When I was enrolled at Freehold High School, I was a positive youth. I was heavily medaled and constantly felt horrible about myself. The worst baggage was this problem to me as hearing how much I had studied to prepare for my test, which didn't help me prepare for university at all. When I went to my guidance counselor about my depression, as I begged and begged to be transferred to Freehold Township, I just ignored and said it couldn't be done, probably because you guys did most of the homework, so I'm glad. I would ask for reasons, but was quickly shoot away out of her office in the back of my classroom, being heckled and harassed. Dr. Holman was there for me. When I was wrongfully placing for classes that were entirely too easy for me because of an IEP that carried over from the middle of school that I didn't get rid of until I was seventeen. He listened to me then about how the system didn't care about me. All of you on this panel only care about proficiency, none of you care about growth. I don't think that's even a loss here right now, but you guys are doing a pretty good job for her, since she's not here, you know, because she doesn't understand the sensitivity and growth of a teenager, just like all of you guys, because I never see your faces in my life, and I wonder after a few years ago. Dr. Holman listened to me about how the school didn't care about me, how I needed change, and how depressed I was. Most days I would arrive home from school, climb my eyes out, I would lay on the floor of my shopping shop, about how much I wanted to die, but Dr. Brett Holman helped me. He told me I was strong, he reassured me that my time at Farrow was only temporary, and thank God it was. Now as a 22-year-old openly gay man, I'm a complete antithesis of what I once was, because I'm here. I'm here because you are all responsible for this slander against this man that has absolutely no physical proof. He's one of the evil, wonderfully compassionate community, and should be known as such. His entire trial was run off of allegations in here saying that have absolutely no physical proof, that you only recently discredited and slandered his degree, that there was certain person, without knowing his name, that is at Freehold High School that you all just like to listen to. And just like Stephen King's famous, Pennywise the dancing clown, she strikes fear over everybody around her, and everybody's afraid of famous stuff, she'll eat them alive.
Mr. Oxman, that's, how you pronounce your name, correct? Mr. Oxman, okay. Board is respectfully listening. We respectfully ask if you refrain from some of the personal attacks and sarcastic comments towards district staff members. You may not be aware, sir, but not only was, and we've addressed this several times in public, not only was Dr. Holman afforded a full arbitration hearing over 10 days and 12 witnesses testified, he also then, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Ox, excuse me, he then appealed to the Superior Court, and a Superior Court judge reviewed everything and not only upheld the arbitrator's decision, but noted that there was factual findings to support the findings of misconduct. So it now has not only been affirmed by the Board of Education, an arbitrator, now also Superior Court. So the allegations and snide comments towards district staff members is inappropriate. If you wish to speak on behalf of Dr. Holman and express your personal experience, the board will listen politely, but it will not sit by while other staff members are attacked.
Well, all right, I understand that, but I just hope you know that I was personally, personally, for four years in that building, attacked by staff. I had a teacher tell me about this, and I ended up with my drug addict brother, who suffered from heroin addiction, and thought that was a casual, fun remark to me, and he also told my classmates, and this is with my own eyes in here, this was told to me, told that people shouldn't end up in our work classes, and I don't feel like using that word specifically in the appropriate. I also had another teacher, when I was in 10th grade, made fun of the bisexual community, and there was an administrative member who I witnessed telling one friend that she shouldn't dress like she strips off of coal. And these were members of staff at Midalpa and Sandringham, I don't know if they're still But my issue is, why is one person's words in these allegations, why are these allegations filed towards Dr. Holman, but things that was stupid, saying like me and local guidance counselor, you shoot out of our office? Why isn't that taken seriously? I was never taken seriously in that building, ever. I was never taken seriously in that building. If I were to have allegations like this, nothing would be done, nothing would be done. And you know, it's just a shame to know that children are sitting in that school right now without his help, because he helped me call myself out of very dark depression, and I know that his termination is based off of hearsay, you know, what you just said, it's a complete farce, and frankly, I don't believe, I know Brett Holman very well, and I know he did not do this. And frankly, my taxpaying money goes towards this trial. Everybody in this district, their taxpaying money goes towards this trial, this complete limit. I believe it's a circus, my personal opinion. And sir, Mr. Board Attorney, I don't get to your name, I saw footage of you attacking Ms. Randy Rankin last time, and how you missed it, it's made, with the tone of your voice, it's not what you say, but it's how you say it, and that's what I've heard a lot in Freehold Borough, was not what was said to me, but how was that. It was also proven inappropriate for a 15 or 16-year-old to hear some of those things, but it was also just how was that. So, you know, I would like my taxpaying money to go towards an attorney with some poise that doesn't have the audacity to just interrupt people when they're speaking. Thank you.
We have one more. Molly? Molly, how do you see your last name? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this time to speak. Please allow me to first introduce myself. My name is Molly Vow, and I'm coming out. Currently, I'm a freshman attending the Academy of Ball and Health and Science, a medical-based school that is part of the Fallow County Vocational School. I'm here today to discuss an issue regarding sports needs and potentially calling a volleyball team to Medalla High School, or a 10-year team from another school near me, like Marburg High School. I flow this again, and everyone has already been extremely defined sports that they love and want to contribute to. Based on the current district regulations, vocational school students must go back to their home schools in order to participate in any sports related activities. Many of my friends have already joined gymnastics, soccer, basketball teams, and other sports. I wanted to do the same, but it was astonished that despite the sport's popularity, there was no volleyball team at Medalla High School. This was extremely backward to me, as many other schools in the Fallow Regional High School District, like Marburg High School and Tulsa High School, they do have volleyball. Even schools outside of this district, like Beddbank Regional High School, do have volleyball. Two years ago, I started playing volleyball, and absolutely fell in love with the sport. In my opinion, it would be a shame if I didn't take my love for the sport and apply it by participating in a high school volleyball. Many of my peers have expressed a similar debate on this matter as well, and I want to make a change. Therefore, I would be ecstatic if this was possible for me and other students in a changed situation during the Marburg volleyball. However, I would also be overjoyed at giving the chance to start a volleyball team of our own at Medalla High School. So far, we already have a few preferred students, and others are also interested as well. If this proposal becomes a reality, not only will numerous volleyball players be given a valuable opportunity to elevate their talents in the sport, but it would also be an excellent way for students to bond and learn the art before acknowledging the sport. Thank you for your time, and I hope our suggestion is seriously taken into consideration.
So thank you, Molly. Appreciate you getting up and advocating. Just a couple points of clarification. So it's an NJSIA rule, it's not a district rule about playing for your home school, so that's the state rule, the governing body of athletics in New Jersey. That's their role for the home school. As far as looking at a volleyball team, we assess all of our teams, you know, I don't want to say on an annual basis, because it hasn't been on an annual basis, but we're certainly looking at our athletic teams, and interest drives that participation, and where those teams have been created over, in the past, there has been a moratorium on any new teams that were not paid for play since 2007, but it's part of a larger district conversation about a number of teams, because you are an individual who loves volleyball, there are other students out there that love other sports, and then we need to make decisions on where the interest is and what it looks like. Certainly looking at it, but you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't state explicitly which way that's going to go, but I certainly appreciate you getting up here and advocating for it.
Molly, can I suggest to you, as a retired athletic director, if the volleyball doesn't happen for you, because you're a freshman, do track and field, find something else to do. You're in a very tough academic schedule when you're going to school, and it's real important for you to have something else, so maybe track and field, you'll meet some great kids, and I'm promoting track and field only because that's where I coached for so many years, but there's a lot of events, there's a lot of events in that sport that are similar to volleyball, okay? Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I was talking to my friend, she joined the gymnastics team at Medalla High School, and she was telling me that if like apparently two or more students were interested in doing gymnastics, if they like, if Medalla High School doesn't have like the students that are interested, and they like those two or more are interested, they could go attend Marburg High School.
No, your friend is giving you bad information on the bus. It's not our rule, it's the NJSIA's rule that you have to participate in your, whatever school you are districted for, so it's not, we don't just arbitrarily draw those lines. And so if you can imagine at Freehold Regional High School District with six high schools, if overnight, if the NJSIA allowed that to happen, suddenly all the football players would go to this school, and all the baseball players would go to this school, and all the, you know, and you would build these powerhouses so in order to ensure competitive balance, that's why they have that rule, but it's the state governing bodies' rule, it's not the school district's rule.
Sure. Promise me you're finding something. Okay.
Mr. Stansfield, when you give examples, could you include soccer? I'm sorry, I did not include soccer in my example, but I am now officially including soccer.
We're going to move along. I'd like to have a motion to take Agenda Item G1 to K2.
Motion. Second.
Just one note on the agenda, Board. Item I-4 for Professional Services Award Waste Water Treatment Plan, on the agenda that was published, it states that resolution will be provided at the board meeting. We have spent some time reviewing the proposals, we're going to take additional time and do our due diligence, so I-4 will be removed from the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Just for point clarification, Mr. Moses, are you okay with that revision? Because you admitted the motion to remove the agenda. Are you okay not moving I-4, and Spro as well? Yes, so just as amended.
Mr. Spro. Mr. Carolla.
Yes.
Mrs. Penney-Callens.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes, but I have to abstain. G7, Cole Cameron, JV wrestling coach, Coltsenek, and K1, Charles Sampson Conference.
So just a few notes, I just want to congratulate a few folks who were just approved in the audience, so we have three new administrators who are here tonight. I apologize for those, for Diane and Michael who came at 7 o'clock and got the full effect this evening to enjoy. Tom, hopefully you came a little bit later. But we'll start with Michael Dillon. Michael, if you could stand, please. So Michael will be the new academic supervisor for English at Freehold Township High School. Michael comes to us from Pennsylvania, where he's a literacy framework specialist, Upper Moreland High School, I believe, yeah, been there for well over a decade, doing some terrific work, and I think he recently did the opposite and found himself not moving from New Jersey to Pennsylvania, but from Pennsylvania to New Jersey. from New Jersey to Pennsylvania, but from Pennsylvania to New Jersey, so we're excited to have him come aboard as new academic supervisor for us, so welcome, Michael. Diane Peterson, Diane, can you stand up? So Diane comes to, Diane will be the new academic supervisor for Guidance Services at Coltsneck High School. Diane comes to us from Monroe Township, right next door, has been there for 15-plus years and has done a lot of terrific work at Monroe High School, came to us incredibly highly recommended, and we're pleased to have her start here at Coltsneck High School when she finishes all her recommendations for those Monroe kids. So Diane, welcome. Thomas Rist, Tom, if you could stand up. So Tom will be the new assistant principal of Freehold Township High School. Mrs. Higley, you're finally getting some administrators there that you've, you've been waiting for. Tom comes to us from Parsippany Public Schools, and Parsippany Troy Hills, actually, correct? Is that the, and Tom's been assistant principal there for eight years, and has done a lot of awesome work there, a couple really cool building initiatives that he's overseen in that time, came to us and very, very highly recommended. I want to say all three of these folks went through what really amounted to a four or five round interview process, because if you come from outside, we don't, we don't know you as well, so we really put you through the grinder, so they put a lot of miles on that, on the cars coming back and forth, and I appreciate that, but Tom's going to do terrific work for us, and he'll be at Freehold Township High School. Tom, congratulations.
Old business, new business, I just have one thing to say. I want to congratulate Chuck Sampson, our Monmouth County Superintendent of the Year, and next week at the school boards, he's going to be the region superintendent of the year. So we're all happy and proud, and we'll be down there, celebrate. Motion?
To adjourn.
Motion is adjourned.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?